I think they're well timed. Well, can you show them that? Yeah, but I think the other thing about, well, when I work down the menu, I have to put the lights on one side. That's fine. But you can use it for now.
Good morning. We'll call the meeting to order. And if you please stand, we'll have the invocation, Supervisor Bishop, and the pledge of allegiance, Supervisor Angus.
Heavenly Father, You are our wisdom and our strength. We ask for Your guiding hand to lead us through this meeting. May we approach our tasks with wisdom, and may we approach our members with respect. May our conduct create an environment of cooperation and kindness. Thank You for Your help. Thank You for helping us accomplish our work this day, and we ask these things in Your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Board of Supervisors, may by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorney on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to the Arizona Revised Statutes. At this point, we'll call for a motion in action to call for an executive session to be held September 17th, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion, consultation with legal counsel in accordance with the Arizona Revised Statutes. We have a motion.
Second.
A second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Onto official business to come before the board, discussion of pending legal and complicated litigation claims. Mr. Epsom.
Nothing to report to the board.
Onto committee and legislative reports. Supervisor Johnson, do you have a report this morning?
Nothing this morning, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Bishop?
Nothing this morning, thank You.
Supervisor Angus?
Not a thing this morning.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Oh, nothing.
And I shall refrain from my comments also. Item number three, county manager's report.
I have no report today, Mr. Chairman, thank You.
Very good, thank You. Approve the July 16th and August 6th, 2018 Board of Supervisors' minutes.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. I'll second the motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Onto call to the public. Those wishing to address the board at the call of the public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk of the court. A call to the public, request to speak form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to responding to criticism, referral to staff, or placing the matter on a future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda, with the exception of the consent agenda, and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. I have about four speakers this morning on call to the public.
Stephen Robinson, 5373 Arizona Highway 68 in Golden Valley. Last month, you had a meeting discussing public records requests. I was featured in that discussion, and I thought it'd be great to have a chance to address the issue. First off, Ms. Orr, who made the presentation, pointed out that one of the things she does is, when it looks like a records request is going to be sizable, like several hundreds of pages, she calls somebody and says, "This is the cost. Are you willing to pay it?" Unfortunately, she did not make that call to me regarding that 1,200-page request that I was dumbfounded to see it was that much, because first off, every possible piece of paper was put into that file, from weekly payroll for people, you know, to everything else in there, and it wasn't what I expected, wasn't what I asked for. But I will be willing to pick that up within the next week, because there's some very significant evidence that I saw in there that I want to review in greater detail. I would like to address the board about another request that I made, and I addressed it once, but nobody has responded to it. I made a request on November 13th, then repeated the request on the December 13th, asking for the annual reports required by the designation of adequate water supply approved by the state ADWR in July of 1995. Well, I found out why that request has not been filled. Out of the eight years' worth of reports that I requested, only two of them have been filed by the county. The other six have not been filed. So, at least maybe number six, the latest one, has been filed by June 1st. But it would be good if the county followed through with their responsibilities and filed the GVID annual report as required. It's unfortunate that that has not been done, and that I've now been waiting over 10 months, or almost 10 months, for that report from Mojave County. So hopefully, they'll at least get the two reports to me that they have completed, or if they've completed three or more, that it would be to me soon.
Thank You, Supervisor Watson.
Good morning.
My name is Rick Swatz. I live at 2900 Meconicle Road in Golden Valley. I'm here to talk to you a little bit about some Bureau of Land Management plans to close more than 1,600 miles of two-track trails in Mojave County. Some of you are already aware of this, but the Bureau of Land Management has stated that its preferred plan is to go ahead and close more than 60% of the trails in the northern half of Mojave County. This is going to have a severe impact on a lot of people in this county. It's going to hit ranchers who use those trails to service their water, to round up cattle, to get to the corrals they've already built. It'll hurt miners who actually are already out there working mines and prospects. It'll kill the prospecting industry as far as a lot of people go. The amateur prospectors will be eliminated. Another impact is something that I've been working on personally, and that's the off-road recreational use. I've been working on establishing the area as an off-road destination. We're doing very well. I've had seven videos produced by California companies this year. I have two annual events that draw people from as far away as Germany. We put millions of dollars' worth of hardware on the trails on any given weekend, and these people come here and they spend their money here, and they stay here. And we're establishing this. Moab, Utah, you go over there, you'll see 500 Jeeps in a day. One Jeep's worth $100,000, figure it out. You know, these people spend money. We're being really successful. The fact is, though, that there are laws that prevent BLM from doing what it's doing and acting the way that it is. The travel management plan that they've established, they established years ago, in January of 2017, President Trump signed House Resolution 44 into effect. That resolution states that local priorities must be given primary consideration by BLM before anything is done as far as trail closures or changes on federal land. In order to comply with that resolution, BLM called Public Works in Mojave County and said, "Hey, are we hitting anything that's already a right-of-way? Because we don't want to close any of your right-of-ways." And then they went ahead and decided to close 1,600 miles of trails. Now, there is also a law that requires trails to be open, stay open, if they were established prior to 1976, federal law. I believe it's 2477. I could be quoting the wrong one. But that requires that BLM keep all trails that existed prior to 1976 open. The BLM agent in charge of the Colorado River District told me that BLM will close whatever trails it feels necessary. And if we can prove a trail existed prior to 1976, we can come to this board and ask you to ask BLM to reopen it. My time's up.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. There are other laws that work in our favor. We have a state law that says that the county or the state can declare any two-track or trail that's existing as part of a system that must be maintained and must be kept open. The county can claim those trails, those two-track trails. I talked to the head of BLM. He said, "All that we have to do is have the county board come to him and say, 'We want those trails,' and they'll give them to us." So what I'm asking the board to do is to give a real serious look at how we can work with BLM. The way they set it up, these 1,600 miles of trails, they've divided them into little sections of red lines, and you've got to click on the red line on your computer, and then you've got to comment on that particular section of trail and why you think that should be left open. They're little, one of our people, who actually knows every member of the board, and is very reputable, estimated that it would take 3,000 clicks to comment on each trail. That's clicks of the mouse, that's not comments.
Mr. Swartz, if you'll take your recommendations and meet with Steve Lutowski, we can start those actions.
I would like to...
Thank You.
Yeah, I might, they circumvented the board. BLM circumvented the board by going to Public Works and asking about rights of way, rather than coming to the board and saying, "Does the government of Mojave County have an objection?"
We'll take that into consideration, and if you'll make those presentations to Mr. Lutowski, we can work on those.
I will do so.
Thank You.
Thank You very much. I appreciate your time.
Chairman Watson? Although we cannot talk about this, it's not agendized, I believe we've been approached, all the members of the board's have been approached, we've been talking about it, and I believe it's going to be on next meeting's agenda about the trails. Is that true?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, that's what we're shooting for. We appreciate the suggestion, and we're looking into the legalities of it, and our surveying department is actually looking into the applicability of the RS2477, but thank you for bringing that up, and we'll try to get it on next board meeting.
Right. Thank You very much.
If I could mention one more thing. I began working on, with Buster Johnson, Supervisor Johnson, a number of years ago, we discussed saving these trails, and he told me to go out and start mapping trails, and I have GPSed and mapped more than 50 trails, and almost every one of them slated for closure. So I got a little problem with that.
Very good.
But thank You, I appreciate it.
Thank You.
Good morning, Mr. Watson and other board members. My name is Eva Corbett. I live at 2426 Topanga Drive in Bullhead City. I'm here to ask the Board of Directors, the Board of Supervisors, to support us in our efforts in Bullhead City. We have an initiative on the ballot, Proposition 410, on our ballot for November the 6th. The citizens will be asked to approve the purchase of our district water system from Epcor, and I'm supporting that. I'm part of the H2O Committee. We've been active for the last four months in this endeavor. It's very important that the city control their own water and our own destiny with water, because water is our lifeline, and we're asking the Board of Supervisors for their support in our efforts, and we hope that you will give that to us. You can contact me at 928-758-8464. We are holding educational meetings about this. We're calling it a takeover. We do not want to be controlled by the Arizona Corporations Commissions in Phoenix as to our rate changes and other pass-throughs that they're proposing for us. Thank You.
Thank You, Ms. Corbett.
Mr. Chairman, Board Member, Staff, my name is Royanne Ortiz. I live in Bullhead City, Arizona. I got to experience some judicial issues recently, within the last 10 days. The issue was concerning challenging the petition regarding the signature, so I got to in-depth knowledge about petitions and the county recorder and the way they validate. I challenged a person running for the school board down in Bullhead City. I'm running for the school board down in Bullhead City, and I pointed out to the judge what the law was, but the judge didn't care. What the judge cared about was precedence. So I contacted my legislator, and she said that they passed a law in 2016 that expects the judicial system to do strict enforcement. Now, the idea, excuse me, the idea behind this is for people to keep their address up-to-date on the voter registration file. Why is that important? We have almost 120,000 voters, registered voters in Mojave County. 59,000 of them, which is pretty much half, are on active PEVL. In other words, they're going to be mailed their ballots. The mailing that went out for the primary was around 51,000. Guess what? 21,000 ballots were returned. That's pretty significant. That's half of them. And it costs money to mail out these ballots, and hopefully, they reach the voters. And also, I understand there's some issues up in Colorado City, too, regarding post office boxes and ballots going there. So you can see the importance of us knowing and enforcing the fact that people, in order to participate in the process, have to have current addresses. And apparently, the courts don't support that. Shame on them. Next item. There was one position that shocked me as to who got elected. This was on the Republican ballot. It was for Superior Court, position for Division VI. My organizations that I'm involved with down in Bullhead City invited all three candidates that were running to come and speak to us. Well, the person who won didn't come to speak to us. They didn't allow us to vet him. Didn't know campaigning. Couldn't even tell how to get a hold of this guy. Yet he won an election. Come to find out, common knowledge to the judicial people, this guy is unemployed, got fired from his last two jobs, yet he won a job that pays around $130,000 a year by the county. Shameful. I don't know if you can come up with ideas, maybe put a citizens committee together so that we can monitor what goes on in our judicial system, when there are complaints, when things aren't... There's only one way to get rid of them, and that's to do recall. That's a lot of work. Thank You.
Thank You, Ms. Ortiz. Okay. Sheriff Schuster. Presentation to recognize the award received by search and rescue volunteer Bill Weaver.
Good morning, Chairman Watson, distinguished members of the board, Mr. Hendricks, Mr. Epsom, and of course, Madam Clerk, good morning to you. Before I begin this presentation, I wanted to make a statement. I realize this morning how closely I have been working with my staff, both my chief and my undersheriff, as we now dress alike, apparently. I found that out when I walked into the office today. I want to thank this board, as always, for allowing me to make this public presentation. We're here today to honor search and rescue member Bill Weaver. As you know, as sheriff, I am state mandated to provide search and rescue services throughout the county, and this is no small role. We handle over 100 searches each year, and as a county, we are very fortunate to have great citizens who are willing to give up their time and efforts to assist us. Currently, we have over 100 volunteers in our search and rescue program, and I'm very proud of these individuals, and I wish to publicly thank them for their continued dedication. We're here today to recognize one such member. Recently, the Arizona Search and Rescue Coordinators Association, with support from the Arizona Sheriff's Association, recognized Mr. Bill Weaver of the Mojave County Sheriff's Office Search and Rescue Bullhead Unit as this year's recipient of the Joe Young Volunteer of the Year Award for 2017, 2018. Bill has volunteered for Mojave County now for over 25 years, and he has been recognized individually for spearheading the search and rescue tracking program that has now been implemented by the state of Arizona. That is a remarkable, remarkable achievement. He has been requested to provide training in other states, contributing to countless hours towards educating searchers so others may live. So at this time, I would like to acknowledge Mr. Weaver and present to you, the board, Mr. Weaver, in reciprocation of the award he received from the state. And the award reads, "Joe Young Volunteer of the Year Award to Bill Weaver, in appreciation for your contribution and dedication toward the search and rescue efforts for the state of Arizona, its sheriffs, and its coordinators. Congratulations, Mr. Bill Weaver." Thank You very much.
Thank You, Sheriff Schuster. Before I go any further into the agenda, I'd like to recognize Supervisor-Elect Ron Gould, if you'll please stand.[1385.01][1385.01](applause) Okay, onto the consent agenda. The following items listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group, acted upon by one motion, with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Supervisor Johnson, do you have any items to remove?
Item 30, please.
Item 30?
30.
Thank You. Supervisor Bishop?
27, please.
27. Supervisor Angus?
Supervisor Johnson took mine, I won the 30 as well.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
None.
And I have none also. So Chair, would entertain a motion for the acceptance of the consent agenda, with the exception of items 27 and 30.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Onto item 27, Supervisor Bishop.
Thank You, Chairman Watson. I just was in hopes that our library director would be able to enlighten us as to this donation to the library of materials with an approximate value of $135,000. It's very generous. I'm just curious, where did all these donations come from, and what kind of donations were they?
Good morning, Ms. Pennell.
Good morning. Supervisor Bishop, Chairman Watson, members of the board, these are books, DVDs, CDs, that have been donated throughout the year. As they come in, we look at them and see if there's something that we can add to our collection, and this is a tabulation of those items that we have, in fact, added to the collection. The things that we have not added were passed on to the friends of the library for book sales and such.
Okay, so I assume that the donors receive a receipt so they can use that as a tax deduction?
They can. Often, people just leave boxes in the front and aren't expecting a receipt, so if they come in with a box, we just say, "Box of books" on the receipt. We don't give an amount or anything, and just, you know, give them that receipt.
Okay. Well, I think it's a wonderful way for our library to grow, and thank you for explaining that. You only keep the books that are viable for the library, and then the rest are sold off as fundraisers.
Right.
Thank You.
Thank You.
Thank You, Ms. Pennell.
I make a motion that we approve item number 27.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion is carried unanimously. Item number 30, Supervisor Johnson.
Thank You, Mr. Chairman. I've had conflicting information on this. What I'm curious about is, is this being paid for from the general fund, or is it being paid from the Parks Continency Fund?
Steve, Mr. Lutowski? Did you understand the question or hear the question?
Yes, Chairman Watson, yes, I heard Supervisor Johnson. And Chairman Watson, members of the board, Supervisor Johnson, this expense will be wholly funded through the Parks Budget, Fund 216. It is a position that will be dedicated to serving the needs and ongoing substantial demand for our lodging facilities at Walpampi Mountain Park.
Any further questions for...
All right, just to clarify, yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, no general fund money is being used, it's being paid for completely out of the Parks Budget.
Supervisor Johnson, that is correct. Zero general fund money is allocated for this service, and it'll be wholly funded by the Parks Budget.
That's all I have. Thank You, Mr. Chairman, thank You, Mr. Lutowski.
Chairman Watson?
Thank You. Supervisor Angus?
My only concern was, because I've been kind of seeing this too often, and things are inadvertently left out, you know, things are, agenda items are taken off, and so how was it inadvertently left off?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Angus, as part of the Public Works Budget's middle, last spring, we had advanced this new initiative, and I will take responsibility, for whatever reason, the new initiative did not get forwarded in the proper manner from my department to finance. We had this carefully planned and calculated, and it would just replace a temporary labor tradesperson that's currently performing a lot of custodian duties. We really want to enhance the quality and completeness of our custodial duties up in the park, and for whatever reason, it was omitted off the 19 budget. But we were positioned budget-wise, we included the budget appropriation, we just failed to include a new initiative, which was ultimately considered by the board.
Oh, so the money was there? You just forgot...
The money was there, but the new initiative wasn't there, and, you know, cross the Ts, dot the Is, I was not comfortable in advancing any approval for hiring until we had board approval.
All right. That's it, thanks.
Does that clarify your...
Yes.
...question? Okay.
Motion to approve item 30.
No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
One more question? Yes, go ahead, Supervisor Johnson.
Oh, no, I was just saying, if there was no more questions, I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have your motion. Would you like to second one?
I will second that.
We have a motion from Supervisor Johnson, second Supervisor Angus. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried unanimously. That concludes our consent agenda. We'll now move on to public hearings. We'll now move on to public hearings. And I'll open the public hearing for item number 45, for the discussion, possible action for the approval of the adoption of Board Resolution Number 2018-103, the rezone of a sessless parcel number 402-66-068, from a residential recreation 10 acre minimum lot size to residential recreation 2 acre lot size zone, as for a minor land division in the Beaver Dam vicinity, south of Grafton Street, west of Clover Valley Lane, in the Arizona Strip area. A Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I have no one signed up to speak to item number 45. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak to item number 45? All right, no one wishing to speak to item 45, I'll close the public hearing for item 45.
Chairman Watson?
Supervisor Bishop?
I'll make a motion that we approve this item?
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, for the approval of this item. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, if the clerk will do a roll call.
Supervisor Angus?
Aye.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, on to item number 46. This has been some additional information to this item, and the folks at the Developmental Services are requesting that we refer this back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Chairman Watson, I believe that's correct. The information was sent out to the Board on Friday from Director Walsh.
Thank you.
So it is not included in your backup, as it was too late for me to post it.
If you would like to explain, Director Walsh?
Be happy to. Chairman Watson, members of the Board, this item, Planning and Zoning received an application for a special use permit in the Beaver Dam area in order to construct a billboard sign. Our zoning ordinance allows for a billboard to be constructed not closer than 500 feet from an existing billboard. The applicant requesting this specific billboard also rents space on the adjacent property for a billboard. We had been told that that billboard would be coming down, and that they would be looking for a new billboard on the adjacent property. Since the Planning and Zoning Commission, we found that the existing billboard, the property owner A of the existing billboard, has filed an application to reconstruct that existing billboard in that location. As such, that existing location would prevent us from allowing a billboard to be constructed on the neighboring property. Hope that was a little bit clearer than mud.
Okay.
Be happy to answer any questions, but with that, we submitted a memo to the Board basically stating, with this additional information, we'd like to take it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, provide all of that information to them so that they could make a recommendation to the Board.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Walsh, for getting us up to speed on that. Okay, Chair would entertain a motion to refer back to Planning and Zoning.
Chairman Watson, I'll make that motion to refer it back to Planning and Zoning for consideration.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, to refer this item back to Planning and Zoning. That was done without opening the public hearing. Is that the correct procedure on that?
No, I'd rather, if we could, hold the public hearing, then close it, and then do that.
Okay, then I'll open the public hearing for 46. Anyone wishing to speak to item 46? Very good. That's the reason why.
Yeah, so have we withdrawn our motion then?
Well...
Who was it that made the motion? I can't remember.
I made the motion, and I do withdraw.
Yeah, and then let's hold the public hearing.
I think we could withhold the motion.
Yeah, let's hold the public hearing, close it, and then you can decide what you wish to do.
Yes, sir. Sorry for the confusion.
Rick Anderson, 820 Chaprell, Mesquite, Nevada. We are the property owners of the parcel that currently has the sign on it. We have the, both permits, both to reconstruct and everything, and so we're just very confused on how they got a special use permit like 70 feet away, and that pretty much sums it all up.
Very good.
And he doesn't have a lease on the existing property, it's better than 10 years old, the lease, so, since expiration.
Any questions for Mr. Henderson? That's why we'll be sending it back, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak to item 46? Please state your name and address for the record.
Paul Newbold, 2604 Van Ross Drive, South Jordan, Utah. I am representing Insight Advertising, the owner of the billboard on the property. In 1994, we acquired a 30-year lease on the property. We acquired all the permits necessary to construct the sign at that time, with the county and with the state. And we began operating business there. We're a billboard company, obviously, and we operated the billboard there for the last 24 years. We, the lease has been assumed and consented by several landowners during that time. The, Mr. Anderson purchased the property last year, the new owner, and they have elected to, they have decided that they don't want to continue with the lease as it is. It was a 30-year lease, it's in its 24th year, so they requested that we move the sign, find a new place to put the sign. So obviously, being a billboard company, we have advertisers on the sign, and we need to preserve business there. We needed to find a location that would be suitable to move the sign to. So we, rather than fight over the lease with the new owners, we agreed we would move the sign off of their property, and we found a new lease, and we put, sorry, put in for permits with the county, with the state, to move the sign to the new location next door, so that we could work with the landowner's request to do so. And so, we're just trying to preserve our business, and to continue business as we've been doing for the past 24 years. And that was the reason for the request, for the permits, the special use permit. We're just trying to abide by all the laws of the land, and to work with the landowner's request to move the sign. And it's a legal conforming location next door, and there's a, so, that's our story. We don't understand how you could, you know, offer a, these guys decided, I guess, that they want to build a sign as well, but they're free to do so, but I think they would need to follow the same procedures that we've gone through, follow the rules of being able to build a sign. So that was the reason for the Commission to recommend that we, you know, that we should be able to move the sign. That was the, that was the recommendation based on that. So I would assume you would agree with them, but do you have any questions regarding that?
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak to item number 46? Okay, at this point, I'll close the public hearing on item number 46, and...
Chairman Watson, I'll make a motion to refer this back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for reconsideration.
We have a motion, and second, seconded by Supervisor Angus. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. On to item 47, I'll open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the approval of the adoption of Board Resolution 2018-105. This is for the denial of an extension of time for the Board Resolution Number 2010-230, as amended by Board Resolution 2012-21, 2014-164, 2016-058. Setting forth a major amendment to the Mojave County General Plan for a solar power plant and related uses in the Sterling vicinity. This is north of Interstate 40 and State Highway 95 interchange, Mojave County area. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial by unanimous vote. I have a number of people wishing to speak to item 47. And first is Charles DeShazer.
Good morning, my name is Charles DeShazer, I live at 8778 Polaris Road, it's out in the area near Sterling. I am just here to support the Sterling group that is trying to put this project together. I believe it would cover 47, 48, and 49. I don't know if you want me up here again or not, but I've just traveled an hour and a half from my house, because the roads are so horrible out there, to try to even get to the pavement, and these guys have been good neighbors as far as trying to get this project through, but you know, with bureaucracy being what it is, I'm not sure how to actually read these, whether an approval of these agenda items would mean a denial of time for them, which would shut their project down, but I support that they get an extension of time, because they've been working on it for a few years, and I know how things go with government, they tend to get studies backed up again and again and again, and I'd just like to support them in getting these projects done. If you have any questions for me, I can tell you where I live, and they've been good neighbors, and I think that it would be good for the community to see that this project gets taken care of and completed, rather than make them start all over from scratch, and it would mean jobs, it would mean improvement, it would mean more tax dollars to the area. I don't see why you'd deny them any more time to do what they've been working on. Thank you. Is there any questions?
Questions?
Members of the Board, good morning. Chad Vilimer, Golden Shores Fire Department Chief. Yeah, we support the, we're here to support them. It's gonna be a great project if it gets going. They're trying to put an infrastructure in, roadwise, as a gentleman just before me talked, he lives out there. There, where he lives is basically out of our fire district, and, but we still would love to give him service in the medical and fire, and right now, the roads are just impassable. The time we get out there, the things are already gone sour, so we have to, we have to call a helicopter in for medical and that kind of stuff, or they have to try to get to us. But yeah, it's a good project, it's gonna, it'd be a good income for a lot of people, for employment and stuff to be, I support it very much, and our community does too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Chief. Any questions for Park Chief? All right, Robert Hibbs.
Chairman Watson, members of the Board, good morning. I'm Robert Hibbs, I'm the manager of Sterling Solar, and we are the owners of the Sterling Project. We have owned the property for over 25 years, and have had a good working relationship with the community and Mojave County for that time. The property has an underlying zoning of approximately 37,000 homes, commercial and industrial. We have obtained an overlay zoning for PV solar and heavy industrial. This type of solar power utilizes very little water. Sterling Solar is requesting on behalf of itself and associated landowners to extend the timeframe to comply with NEPA, that's the National Environmental Protection Agency Transmission Standards. The project, once started, will expand the employment tax base for the county, it will be of large benefit for funding of the local fire department, as Chad had alluded to, and will access, provide access to the owners of thousands of acres on property to the east, as Charles has discussed. As part of the project, we are anticipating the construction of a road through our property, which will provide legal access to those people to the east. We have commenced with engineering studies and cost analysis for the road, which would be built to county specifications, and I believe we presented to you just a summary of those costs in your packet. The Sterling property is crossed by electrical transmission lines controlled by the Western Area Power Administration. In the order of achievements necessary to obtain a WAPA, Western Area Power Administration, interconnection are generally as follows. You need to secure a buyer for the property, or for the power to be generated, complete the financing or funding for the construction and operation of the project, have WAPA complete their studies for engineering, for the system impact studies and facility studies. We have previously performed these studies and spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to get them, they need to be updated. We need to enter into an interconnection agreement with WAPA and deliver the power over the grid. So those elements take years to complete. Sterling is in an agreement with Illumis, a solar developer which has extensive experience in developing solar power. The agreement would produce approximately 450 megawatts of power. Illumis has entered into a memorandum of understanding with a major funder and purchaser of solar power to complete the project and acquire the property. They have also agreed to build the aforementioned roadway as part of the development. We have put Illumis in direct contact with WAPA, and they are beginning the WAPA review and approval process. Illumis has enlisted the assistance of Logan Simpson Design, the environmental firm, to complete the NEPA approvals, and while these dealings are subject to non-disclosure agreements, I've presented you with a letter from Illumis outlining their basic activities. In addition, we are in negotiations with several other major groups regarding development of other portions of the Sterling property, and they would add to the tax and employment base of the area also. In our discussions with the county, we have described the long-term nature of the process. We are requesting that would be granted an extension necessary to complete the project. This will keep our group hard at work, trying to bring new and beneficial business groups to our area. We hereby request an additional two or three-year extension. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, we've been here before, you've been up here before, you've, how many times have you asked for an extension on this property?
I believe three.
Three. And how many years do you foresee this more taking, this project?
Simply the approvals from WAPA and NEPA take approximately two years. So it is an extensive and elaborate process. We're subject to, we're kind of on the international stage. What happens at the national level makes a big difference, at the tax level makes a big difference, and the economic winds blow all directions. So we've been here before, we've actually had groups that have signed up, and we thought we had it completed. We're not quitters, and we are, we feel we're close, we'd like to deliver the project, we don't see any detriment to the county to allow us to... we don't see any detriment to the county to allow us to proceed and continue to work.
How much money, how much money have you invested so far? Would you say?
Million, million and a half.
Right, and there's not, there's nobody who's come forward against it. I think in the past, you know, I remember, so there were some issues at the P and Z with some people, and for some reason they, they keep wanting to shut this down. I really don't see a reason not to give you the extended time. No one's come forth, your neighbors have, the fire districts come forward, so I'm inclined to give you your extension.
We thank you. Thank you.
I have a question.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes, this has been going on since like eighteen years, and it just seems that you can't get, you can't hit it out of the ballpark, and if I'm understanding right, the main problem is that you haven't been able to establish a power purchase agreement with the utility, is that what's holding all this up?
That, but the developers, it's a, the cost of this four hundred and fifty megawatts is approximately four hundred million dollars, and it takes the support of Wall Street, it is impacted by what the Federal Reserve does on interest rates. Many of these things are out of our control, but we, we are, we went through eight or ten years of a period when not much was being built, and we're coming, the economy's better, the market is good for this at this point. Now, we have more than interest, we have contracts we're dealing with, we have groups that are talking about the solar, we have several groups talking about heavy industrial right now that would bring in hundreds of jobs, but that's just talk until it's done. So we're doing our best, we work on it every day, and we're out there for us and for you.
Okay, I know that you, your company has invested a lot of money and time, can you tell me what has changed since two years ago when you came to us with this same, same request for an extension of time? What improvements have you made, what progress?
Two years ago, we had a group that was, and I, the election on a national level made a significant difference, I can't go into specific names, but there were groups involved in the financing of the previous project that because of conflict of interest rules had to back away once the election of a year ago November occurred, and we had to start over again. And we've, we've engaged local engineers to give us studies now because we're working on this roadway as an element to try to get that done. Putting in the roadway is significant in that it opens up that property, and then we're not dealing with ten thousand acres as a piece, we can do much smaller pieces. So that's, that's a critical element for us, and you know, we've, we're dealing with four groups right now, some solar, some industrial. And I had a call last week from a major group, groups that would like to come over from California and establish their businesses here. Regulations are more difficult in California than they are here, and they, those groups would like to be as close to the California border as they can be, and we're as close as you can get. So all I can do is tell you that we're trying hard and we're hopeful, and we wouldn't be spending the money we're spending if we didn't think that we'd be successful.
How much have you spent in the last two years?
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars maybe, something like that. But it's not just us, you know, we've, we've, other people are spending, these groups come in and they'll, with their engineers and their studies, spend, you know, will spend a hundred thousand fairly quickly. So it isn't just us, there's a lot of other people spending money collaboratively to get this accomplished.
Okay, two years ago, the plan and zoning at that time recommended denial, is that correct? And the board overturned that and gave you an extension of time? And we can do that again, and we can keep doing that over and over again, but I just, I'd like to see an end to these extensions, I mean, and I'm sure you would too.
From my chair, I don't understand the need for the time limit to begin with. It's, to get the NEPA approval is an extension of the elements that we need to get to accomplish this, but I don't see any damage to the county, just say that, that, just go out and do it. And, and when you bring investors in, and it takes several years to get this accomplished, and they read the record and say, well, you've got to go back to the county in two years to get this accomplished, can you get that? And we have to assure them we can, but it adds a question in their minds as to whether they're going to spend a lot of money and then come to you folks and be denied. So I, that's, that's my opinion, that it should be permanent, and we'll do our best. But you know, you're, the governance here, and you need to do what is in your best judgment.
If this board decides to vote for the denial, that puts you in a position where you'd have to start all over again?
Yeah, we're out of business.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
The improvement that you're going to, the road, is contingent on you getting an extension, but when would you start working on this road?
Well, we have to have the developer and the money behind the developer sufficiently comfortable that the project will be completed in order to proceed with the road. The road is necessary for construction, so the process would be to start with the WAPA approvals, which takes up to two years, and also with NEPA approvals. We've already gone through and done all the environmental studies for NEPA, and it's a review process, but it still has governmentally required times for notice, et cetera, to go through the process, and it's a federal process, not a state process. So if we get down the road and those processes are going well, then I would expect that that developer is going to say, well, we need to start our project, and we can't start our project till we put the road in. That's one of the reasons we put that as an element, to kind of force that upfront. So I don't have a timeframe, but I'd like to think it would be in the next year.
Thank you.
One more question.
One more question, sure.
On the road, didn't you promise that two years ago and it still hasn't?
No. It wasn't an element of this, it's, it's a practical requirement in order to get, to get the equipment in and operate, so as a practical matter, it's there.
I'm not sure how I'm going to vote on this yet, I haven't made up my mind, but it just doesn't seem like, like there's been any progress.
Well, it's difficult to, to, you'll see that the cost of the road is about eight million dollars, and to have somebody come up, upfront and say we're going to spend eight million dollars before we're assured that we can get all of our permits, I think isn't going to happen.
Exactly, and you're probably not going to be able to find a purchase, power purchase agreement unless progress has been made, it's like, it's a vicious circle, I feel for your financial.
There's a lot of elements, but, but to deny it just means that you don't have somebody out there working to try to accomplish this to benefit the county, and I don't, I don't understand what benefit the county gets from denial, but again, that's not my decision.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs.
Sure.
Mr. Shazer, Karen, would you wish to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
Karen K. De Shazer, eighty-seven seventy-eight Polaris Road, Topock, Arizona. Chairman Watson, Supervisors. My husband spoke earlier, and it is true, Sterling has been a very good neighbor to us since we first moved to our property in two thousand one. Anytime we had any questions about anything that was happening with our neighbor, and they are a very close neighbor of ours, they were very responsive and answered all of our questions. Our greatest hope is that they will establish a road so we don't have to tear up our cars every day going in and out of our home. It takes us thirty minutes right now to get from where we live to the roadway. This is a positive thing that these folks, this organization is offering us, and personally, I do not see a detriment to the county by not giving them another extension of time on every item on the agenda here, forty-seven, forty-eight, and forty-nine. I would hope that you would give them another extension so we, the residents of the Topock area who live out in that area, can benefit from this development. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Shazer?
Yes, how many, how many homes are out there that are currently being lived in?
Approximately eight to ten.
Thank you.
As far as you know, are there any of your neighbors against this project?
None of my neighbors are against it, to my knowledge.
I just don't understand why the county would put this, this project out of business. If no one's complaining, if no one's saying anything, we understand when you're working with the federal government, we of all people understand that, that it takes a long time. I just don't see any benefit, it just looks vindictive, and I don't, I don't like that, I want to help businesses. If this, if your business goes and this project goes on, it's just going to be a help and a, and a money raiser for the county and the, and the fire district and all those issues out there, so I just don't get why the P and Z usually comes back and says, no, I, I understand, you know, this was, we changed these special use permits and whatever, but I think it is our business to help businesses, not to, you know, put our thumb on it, so I'm now even more inclined to do it, being that there's no one against it. Usually when it comes before us, we have a whole, you know, line of people who are against it, and that's what makes it hard, you know, the homeowners are against something, but I see no dissension in this. So why would I want to, why wouldn't I want to stop a potential successful project from happening?
Thank you. Thank you for keeping in mind the residents' side of it also, not just the developers. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Shazer.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak to item number forty-seven? Okay, I'll close the public hearing for item number forty-seven.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, sir. Kind of sounds like everybody's making the county out to be a scapegoat on the fact that this project hasn't gone forward. The road, if this is not extended, can still be put in, that's a developer's issue. They've got ten thousand acres, they need to develop it to sell it. This permit that they have in place now doesn't, doesn't give them any more juice as far as putting a road in, and as we all know, they need the purchase power agreement before anything goes forward. If we extend this, it really does no good because everybody's been coming to us saying, we're moving ahead, we're moving ahead, and I've seen no, you know, they talk about money being spent, but it must be spent by somebody else because there's nothing that shows up on the property, but without a purchase power agreement, nothing will go forward, and nobody's going to look to say if the zoning's there or not, because when you do that purchase power, you go to whoever it is, you convince that you're, to convince them that they need to buy the power from you, they say, yes, we will buy X amount of power, you give them the timeline you're going to do it, they come to the county, it's already been approved before, I see no reason why the county wouldn't approve it again, but to say that this is all the county's fault and nothing's gone forward is a total fabrication. That's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson, Supervisor Angus?
Yeah, just a little clarification, I'm not saying it's the county's fault at all, I mean, we're just doing the process, we're doing it the way we're supposed to do it, I understand, you know, and that's what a special use permit is, and you know, you come before us, and, but again, I don't really see an argument against it, other than process.
Correct, as the NEPA process can.
And then, Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, sorry for stepping on you, it's a delay for my end when it goes through. No, I wasn't referring to Supervisor Angus's statements, the problem you get into is if we make an exception here, you can have stuff that sits on the, on the records for years, this has been twenty-ten when this started. If we start having, you know, more and more that start sitting that, that farther back, a lot of stuff isn't pertinent till today, and you know, if somebody shows some movement, that's great, I'm, you know, I've been here since they first started this and been a big supporter, but nothing has been done that I can see that gives me any, any hope that it's going to be done anytime in their future, that we should keep this on the, on the books, that's all.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. The only thing I'd like to note is that many times it can take up to six years for a NEPA process to occur, so I understand the many hoops in which these organizations have to jump through, so that's my only comment.
I wonder if Tim Walsh would have anything to add?
Mr. Walsh, your opinion?
Chairman Watson, members of the Board, I've asked Ms. Ballard to come with, she's much more acquainted with this project and been through the rounds with them, but at the time of application, the staff was given no evidence of any progress on this project, which due to that, we recommended, because there had been no progress in the past two years since the previous approval, that was the reasoning for our denial just, or our denial recommendation. I don't know if Chris has any information she'd like to add that might.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I will note that the environmental process is a public process with WAPA, and to our knowledge, Mojave County has not received an invitation or a notice that that process has started.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for?
Does the applicant have to have a purchase power agreement before the NEPA process can go forward?
Members of the Board, Supervisor Bishop, I do not know the answer to that.
Okay, thank you.
It's not necessary, but it'd be kind of like building a plant without having a customer, so.
Can you expound on, on the harm this does to keep it on the books year after year after year, does it take staff time, is it, is it burdensome to staff?
Members of the Board, Supervisor Bishop, forget how many years ago, five or six years ago now, the Board of Supervisors adopted a schedule for developments, and we have developments that are subject to the extensions of time. We do follow a board adopted policy, that policy says that there would be, there will be progress, documentable progress from one request to another. This is the second extension of time where the department has not had any progress that we could document or any documents that have been submitted to us showing progress on this project. That policy kind of binds us to make a recommendation to the commission of, for not extending the approvals. The commission and the board are not subject necessarily to that, to that policy.
If this board was to deny, not saying that it will, but if it does, can they then, is there a period of time before they can come back and reapply?
Members of the Board, Supervisor Bishop, I'm not aware of a time limitation for the plan amendments themselves, for the rezone, it would be one year.
Okay, thank you. So in one year, if this is denied in one year, they could come back and start the process from step one?
And what cost would that be?
I believe the plan amendments would be about fifteen hundred apiece.
There is a, there is a cost involved?
There is a cost.
A cost that they've already paid?
There would be a cost, it would be a four-digit cost.
Okay.
Okay.
Does an extension of this affect all... I mean, are you going by the rules that govern all permits, that you're restricted, or is it just solely for this particular item?
Members of the board, Supervisor Wakamoto, the policy that we're following covers all rezones that have a time limit attached to them. So, in other words, if there is a condition on the rezon that says, you know, progress must be made, or permits must be pulled within a year, two years, five years, all of those fall under the same policy that we're applying to these three projects, or, excuse me, these three approvals.
Any further questions?
Yeah, well, I understand you're doing it by the book. That's your pro... And I understand that, and that is exactly why it comes before us, for us to make that decision, whether or not we want to let a project continue or put them out of business, because of our process. Thank you.
Okay.
Chairman Watson, I just wanted to make one last comment, and I would be willing to give them a one-year extension, because it's been four years now without any progress at all. So a one-year extension, I think I could support that. And during that one-year period, I'd like to see some kind of progress made, rather than just nothing that you can show.
Would I approach?
Yes, Mr. Hibbs, go ahead and approach. Please make it brief.
We're very frustrated also when we enter into arrangements and negotiations with these developers and with the financiers. They're all subject to nondisclosure agreements. And we'd love to show you, and I know that Supervisor Johnson doesn't have the benefit of the letter that we provided earlier from Alumis, he being not present, but it's just a letter of representation. They are a large developer of solar in many parts of the world, and there's... But there's just these contracts I can't show you. And I'm not saying that they're finished, but I can say that there's... We've got engineers that have come out to the property, and we've got financing people that we've met, and groups out from New York, et cetera, et cetera. And until I have a signed transaction, I can't show you anything. And as far as the power purchase agreements go, most of the utilities these days require a very large cash deposit from the developer as good faith that they will be able to complete and deliver the power. So we kind of... We do have a conundrum here where we need your approval in order to get to the power purchase agreement. And without that, these people aren't going to want to put up the large millions and millions of dollars of deposits for this. So we're... I wish I could show you more. We have plenty of activity going on. We spend a lot of time with this. And I'm sure you're frustrated taking it on faith that something's going on. But we are here all the time. We're working all the time on this. And we've been to China to meet with people. We've been, you know, we've got people from New York, we've got people from London.
Mr. Hibbs, we know that you're meeting with a number of, a great number of people.
Okay. In any event, I wish... But the power purchase agreement, while it is required, it isn't going to happen without the other permits being substantially moved along, and we can't do that without your approval. So...
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs.
I move that we grant them an extension of two years, because I don't believe you can get anything done in one year. To pursue what they...
Okay, we have a motion then for two years?
Yes.
Is that correct? From Supervisor Wakamoto. I believe that was a second by...
I'll second that. I think that, isn't that the original... That's what the resolution says? It's a two-year extension? So it would be sort of the... An acceptance of the resolution, not the denial, because it's two years?
I think the resolution is for the denial.
Yeah, the resolution is for the denial. I believe your motion would be to grant the extension, not the denial.
Grant the extension.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's make sure that the public hearing is closed, okay? And the motions are both, okay, acceptable. Questions for Ms. Ballard? Thank you, Ms. Ballard. Okay, any further discussion? There being no further discussion, Madam Clerk, if you'll open.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes, on the extension of two years.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
No.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes. You have two years.
Motion carries for an extension of two years.
Okay. Onto item number 48. Open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action to approve the adoption of Board Resolution 2018-106. Also a denial of the extension of time for Resolution 210-231, as amended by Board Resolution 212-022-214-165, 2016-059, setting forth a major amendment to the Sterling Area Plan, boundary extension and adjustment between the Sterling Area Plan and the Desert Hill Fire District Area Plan for a solar power plant and related uses in the Sterling vicinity. This is north of Interstate 40 and upstate Highway 95 interchange. It's in the Mojave County general area. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial by unanimous vote, and so I'm opening the public hearing for that. Mr. Caesar, we understand that you're very much in favor. Mr. De Caesar, we understand you're very much in favor. Mr. Hibbs, if you'd like to get up again, but we understand that you're certainly in favor?
Unless you have any further questions.
Any further questions? Any questions for Chad Vilimer? Anyone else wishing to speak to item number 48? At this point, I'll close the public hearing for item number 48. And entertain a motion.
Can I ask, Mr. Esslin, what would be the correct motion for this? So we would approve an extension of time? Do we have to put how long? Saying two years?
I would recommend you put two years. Make it consistent with item 47.
Okay, so a two-year extension on the major amendment to the Sterling Area Plan and boundary expansion, yada, yada, yada.
Okay. We have a motion?
Second.
And second? Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
No.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion for a two-year extension approves.
Onto item number 50. Open the public...
49.
Forty... I'm sorry, 49?
No, this one's different.
Open the public hearing for item number 49. Discussion, possible action, approve the adoption of Board Resolution 2018-107, again for denial of extension of time for Board Resolution 2010-233, as amended by Board Resolution 2012-023-214-166, 2016-060, setting forth a rezon to the heavy manufacturing and the E-solar photovoltaic overlay zone for a solar power plant and related uses in the Sterling vicinity, north of I-40 and State Highway 95. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended by denial by unanimous vote. Mr. Caesar, I assume that you'll still be in favor? Charles De Caesar? Still in favor? Mr. Hibbs? In favor? Chad Vilimer? In favor? And yes, would you like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
Eva Corbett, 2426 Topanga Drive, Bullhead City. I have dear friends that live in that area, and if they say it's a benefit to them, I concur. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Watson?
Anyone else wishing to speak to item number 49?
I'd like to... This is a rezon. Is that different than... Could... Oh, sorry.
Anyone else wishing to speak to item number 49? Okay, at this point, I'll close the public hearing for 49. Supervisor Wakamoto, question?
Yeah, could I ask Tim Walsh and Chris Ballard?
Hi. Is this... This item is different from the other two in that this is a rezon, or am I reading this incorrectly?
Members of the board, Supervisor Wakamoto, you were reading it correctly.
So this is something new that is coming to us?
This is actually part of the original approval dating back to 2010. There have been some minor changes made to both the rezon and the plan amendments themselves. The applicant changed technologies, went from a Sterling engine to a photovoltaic system.
So the rezon for... How does this affect... It goes from heavy... It goes to a heavy manufacturing rezon instead of the solar that they were before?
Actually, Supervisor Wakamoto, I believe the original rezon, or the original zoning for the area was agriculture-residential. There was an area plan for a planned community for this area, but the zoning itself had not been requested or approved by the board. So it would have gone from an AR zone to an MX and an ESP overlay. The overlay would leave the AR in place and would just be an additional use that the applicant could engage in.
Is that answer your question?
This was all part... These were the three things that we've been voting on for the last several years. So they all go part and parcel. So we're just doing an extension, because we've already done the rezon.
Except for the rezon.
Yeah, I believe the... Yeah, I believe that photovoltaic overlay has been in place since 2012, if memory serves. But prior to that, it was the Sterling engine, so it was just... It's just a difference of technology. These were all included in the original approval in 2010.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak to item number 49? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
It's already closed.
It's already closed. Very good.
Okay, Chairman Watson and I make a motion that we grant a two-year extension of time for the rezon to MX heavy manufacturing and ESP solar photovoltaic overlay zone for a solar power plant and related uses in the Sterling vicinity.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the two-year extension. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
No.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Onto item number 50. Open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action, approve the adoption of Board Resolution 2018-108, special use permit for the accesses parcel number 225-32-017B, to allow for a wireless telecommunication facility in the general commercial one-acre minimum lot size zone in South Mojave Valley vicinity, north of Valley Drive, East of State Highway 95. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I have no one wishing to speak to item number 50, but I will allow anyone in the audience wishing to speak to item number 50. Yes, sir. Gentlemen, please take your conversation in the back out of the auditorium. Thank you.
Chairman Watson, supervisors, my name is Reg Destry. I'm at 22831 North 21st Street in Phoenix, Arizona. I'm actually the applicant under this, and I apologize, I have the card filled out. I did not fill it out prior to the meeting.
I thought you were the applicant.
As this has been recommended for approval, St. Charles Tower is simply requesting approval. This is one of two items that was on the agenda today. The other was passed on the consent, and the sites were developed simultaneously to work together. I'm really just here to answer any questions you may have. If you do have any, otherwise, in the interest of time, I'll keep my 20 pages of PowerPoint to myself.
Questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to item number 50? Okay, we'll close the public hearing for item number 50.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion that we approve item 50.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of item number 50 to allow a wireless telecommunication facility. Any further discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, one more. Item number 51. Open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action, approve adding a $50 one-time fee to the sheriff's fee schedule for the sheriff's labor adjustment program called SLAP.
Chairman Watson?
Public hearing was postponed, and we're looking for a reset for the public hearing for November 5th. So anyone wishing to speak to item 51? Speak briefly, because we would like to reset this.
Yeah, we were postponing it, so there won't be a public hearing today. It won't be until November 5th if the board chooses to reset it.
Okay, but the board needs to take action to reset it, correct? Okay, so I'll close.
Chairman, I'll make...
Anything that I've opened?
I'll make a motion that we reset this public hearing for November the 5th of 2018.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for a reset public hearing. Those in favor? Supervisor Johnson, questions?
Thank you. I think we don't have the backup today was a big part of what happened. Shouldn't we just take no action on this and wait till all the paperwork comes back and is filed before we set a public hearing when we haven't done, you know, any kind of postings or anything we have to do? Just let them bring it back to us when they're ready?
I think they're ready. To me, excuse me, Chairman Watson, I believe the... I believe the hangup was the timing for getting the publication out. Is that incorrect?
It was the timing for the posting to the website. However, Supervisor Johnson is correct, there was nothing submitted for backup at this time, but it was not published on the website. So we want to set it 60 days out.
So then, once we set it for the November 5th, 2018, then they can provide backup for that, so people will be able to have the backup at that time. So at today's meeting, we can set it for a public hearing for November 5th of 2018. So at today's meeting, we can set it for a public hearing for November 5th of 2018.
Motion?
I think we have a motion.
We have a motion and a second? Okay. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I believe motion was carried unanimously. I believe. Okay. Now on to the regular agenda, and we finally have a little latitude for movement. At this point, I'd like to bring item number 53, the adoption of Resolution 2018-111 honoring the life of United States Senator John McCain. In our audience today, we have past mayor Carol Anderson and past board supervisor Carol Anderson. I would like to say a few words of the honoring John McCain and what he did for Mojave County. Supervisor Anderson, would you please take the podium? Would you prefer to be called Supervisor or Mayor?
Carol.
Carol.
Thank you for this opportunity. And yes, titles are fine, but I am Carol, so I appreciate being a little informal. Any married couple who has one of their spouses serve in public office needs and appreciates that spouse's support. Cindy supported John and John supported Cindy. My personal experiences experiencing this cooperation was when Cindy was asked to come to Kingman to help kick off our Clean City Commission and to address the city council. Cindy agreed to come and John helped to get her there. On the day she came, it had been rainy, nasty, muddy roads. And Cindy was dressed in a very nice, professional, light pink suit, high heels, et cetera. So John, being John, helped Cindy drive from their home up the muddy, dirty road to the highway where Cindy could then come on this way. But of course, muddy, dirty, slippery roads require sometimes you have to get out and push the car. And John did that for Cindy. So she could come onto Kingman and represent us. The day before Cindy was to come, as I said, it had rained hard, and so that was the cooperation that we had. It was a successful effort and Cindy left John at the top of the road and she drove onto Kingman. John stayed home and took care of the kids. John and Cindy, in their partnership throughout their lives, helped each other. I thank you, John, for all that you did for us. And thank you, Cindy and family, for all you gave. So I support your plans to honor not only the people, but the people that supported them. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Like to add a couple of, just a couple of points that Senator McCain really was beneficial in helping put together the Mojave County Water Authority. Hadn't been for legislative action, for that wouldn't have occurred. He also, of late, has, just in the last 18 to 24 months, come to the Kingman Airport and got the federal government to accept responsibility for what they, as indicated is the DROS site. That's an area at the airport that was used after World War II where they dismantled aircraft. And that area now is becoming quite a problem and needs to be remediated. And Supervisor, I'm, I'm sorry, Senator McCain was instrumental in getting the federal government to understand their culpability in that. Of the many accomplishments, I think Mojave County certainly was well-served by Senator McCain. And with that, item number 53, approve the adoption of Board Resolution 2018-111 honoring the life of United States Senator John McCain. Chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And second, Supervisor Wakamoto? Any further discussion?
I'd like to make a comment.
Certainly.
Most, most people know that my daughter was in the United States Air Force and retired after 20 years of service and, and I was not surprised that Senator John McCain called to congratulate me and wrote my daughter a very nice official letter on his Senate stationery, which I'm sure she has in her scrapbook. But Senator McCain has helped Mojave County everything from burrows to fish, downwinders and, and water issues. And any time that I think any of us needed any help from DC, we were able to, to call Senator McCain. So I think the senator placed people above politics and country over party, and I think he will be missed. And I think in, in time, he will have his place in history. And it'll be a good place. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Okay. Any further questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Madam Clerk, would you like to read the resolution?
Supervisor Johnson?
Supervisor Johnson, you have a, a comment?
Oh, I can wait a laughter. I'm just gonna, just to let you know, I don't know, Derek, because you all have been in the meeting, but the governor's appointing Senator Kyle to take Senator McCain's spot, so I think that'll be good for us also.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Mojave County honoring Arizona United States Senator John McCain. Whereas, John Sidney McCain III was born on August 29th, 1936, at Coco Solo Naval Air Station in the Panama, Panama Canal Zone to Naval Officer John S. McCain Jr. and Roberta Wright McCain. And, following in the footsteps of his father and grandfather, entered the United States Naval Academy at Annapolis and graduated in 1958. And, whereas, John McCain was commissioned as an ensign and trained at Pensacola, Florida to became a, to become a naval aviator, completing flight school in 1960. Later, he would be awarded the Navy Commendation Medal, the Purple Heart, the Silver Star, the Bronze Star, and the Distinguished Flying Cross, among other honors for missions flown over North Vietnam. And, whereas, John McCain would be captured on October 26th, 1967, as he was flying his 23rd bombing mission over North Vietnam. His aircraft was shot down by a missile over Hanoi. He fractured both arms and a leg when he eject, he was ejected and was captured and transported to Hanoi's main Hoa Lo Prison, nicknamed the Hanoi Hilton. And he remained a prisoner of war in North Vietnam for five and a half years until his release on March 14, 1973. His wartime injuries left him permanently incapable of raising his arms above his head. And, whereas, John McCain served his country with honor and bravery as a military officer, combat pilot, and POW. And he would go on to serve his state and country with honor and dedication as an elected official in the House of Representatives and the US Senate for a total of 31 years, rising to the highest ranks, including chairman of the Armed Services Committee of the US Senate. He also sought the highest office in the land, receiving the Republican nomination for president in 2008. And, whereas, John McCain was especially a longtime supporter of the goals and desires of the citizens of Mojave County. He has been a longtime supporter of keeping the Arizona Strip open for uranium mining and always was quick to help the residents of Mojave County whenever possible. His quick actions helped save the Willow Beach Fish Hatchery and 78 million in economic development for this, for the county. And, whereas, John McCain passed away on August 25th, 2018, in Cornville, Arizona, with his wife Cindy and family by his side, four days before his 82nd birthday, leaving behind, besides his family, a grieving nation, but also a long and enduring legacy seldom equaled. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we honor this incredible notable of Arizona, John McCain, who reached international fame and served his state, Mojave County, and his country with honor, loyalty, and fortitude.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. I've gone out of order on this purposely to make sure that we could hear from Honorable Mayor Anderson and those comments. Thank you very much. Back to item number 52. Discussion, possible action, approve the adoption of Board Resolution 2018-112, supporting section 232 investigation into the effects of the uranium imports on the US national security. This is brought to us by Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Johnson, do you have comments before we take action on item number 52?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman. We're all fully aware of the, of the issue. This is just to be able to get a, a comment in. That was all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Okay.
Chairman Watson, motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve? I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion on the uranium imports investigation, I'll call for the vote.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson? Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Supervisor Johnson, would you care to have the resolution read for the record?
No, I, I don't believe so unless you, unless you want to do it. I know it's getting kind of late.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We can post it to our website.
All right. Any further business?
Motion to adjourn?
We have a motion and a second. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.